Good evening. The September 23 meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order, but the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Saffertan?
Here.
Councilmember Revel?
Here.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Harakaris?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Councilmember Nguyen? Oh, sorry, Mayor Biss.
Here. We have a quorum and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations, of which there are four proclamations. The first, the Evanston Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation, whereas the observance of National Hispanic Heritage Month started in 1968 as the Spanish Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period, starting on September 15 and ending on October 15. And whereas the city of Evanston proudly acknowledges and celebrates the profound and enduring impact of the diverse Latino community and its vibrant heritage across our nation at both the national and local level, and whereas Latinos have made valuable contributions to our society as doctors, entrepreneurs, social workers, first responders, politicians, and writers, and have played an important role in advancing technology in the field of law, and whereas, as a governing body, it's important for us to carefully consider the positive impact of Latinos on Evanston's culture and success, we must wholeheartedly renew our commitment to providing opportunities that will ensure the accessibility of the American dream for current and future generations to come. And whereas Evanston's commitment to creating the most livable city in America is exemplified by the presence of individuals of Latino descent comprising 11% of our population, this rich diversity is underscored by the recent election of Evanston's first Latina city clerk in April of 2021. And whereas it is important to honor and celebrate the histories, cultures, and contributions of Latin Americans and immigrants whose ancestors came from Mexico, Central and South America, and the Caribbean, and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped Latinos as a people, now therefore I do hereby proclaim September 15, 2024 to October 15, 2024, as Evanston Hispanic Heritage Month, as the official designated month for the city of Evanston's annual Hispanic Heritage Month, and call upon the people of Evanston to join together in recognizing and participating in this special observance. You're so rarely whooping at the end of a proclamation. That was new tradition, please. Would the clerk please add Councilmember Reed to the roll? Next item on the agenda is, the next item among these four is the National Preparedness Month proclamation. And I will briefly read, well, let me, I'll read the proclamation then make an announcement. So first of all, whereas National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for every resident of the city of Evanston to prepare their homes, businesses, and community for any type of emergency from natural disasters to potential terrorist attacks, and whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, businesses, and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our communities and in our nation. And whereas the federal emergency management agencies Ready Campaign, Citizen Corps, and the city of Evanston's police, fire, and emergency preparedness departments are working to increase public activities in preparing for emergencies and to educate individuals on how to take action. And whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen of the city and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas all citizens of the city of Evanston are encouraged to participate in citizen preparedness activities and asked to review the Ready Campaign's websites at ready.gov or listo.gov and become more prepared, now therefore I do hereby proclaim September 2024 as National Preparedness Month in the city of Evanston and encourage all citizens and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together toward creating a more prepared society. And with this objective in mind, I just want to remind folks that there's an emergency preparedness fair going on this September, this Saturday, September 28, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Robert Crown Community Center, and there's going to be a variety of different informational sessions and learning opportunities for folks of all ages to come educate themselves about how to be more engaged in community emergency preparedness. The next proclamation is for Suicide Prevention Month. Whereas in 2022, suicide was the 11th leading cause of death in the United States, the second-leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 44, and over 49,000 individuals died by suicide. And whereas suicide rates increased approximately 36% in the United States from 2000 to 2022. And whereas for every suicide death in 2022, it is estimated that there were 11 emergency department visits for self-harm, 52 self-reported suicide attempts, and 336 people who seriously considered suicide. And whereas over 90% of the people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and potentially treatable mental health condition, although often that condition is not recognized or treated. And whereas suicide results in an estimated more than $500 billion in medical costs, work loss costs, value of life, and quality of life costs nationally. And whereas the negative attitudes associated with mental health conditions and suicidal thoughts and behaviors works against suicide prevention by discouraging persons at risk for suicide from seeking lifesaving help, and further traumatizes survivors of suicide loss and people with lived experience of suicide, now therefore I do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Suicide Prevention Month in the city of Evanston and empower all citizens to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors, and learn suicide risks and warning signs, and encourage those who struggle to seek help and genuinely convey our appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. And I know that there was a possibility that someone would be here to accept this proclamation this evening, but I believe that individual is not, not here yet. Okay, so we'll, we'll hold on to present another time. And finally, National Diaper Need Awareness Week. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not being able to afford a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, and healthy, can adversely affect the health and well-being of children and their families. And whereas national surveys and research studies report that nearly 1 in 2 families struggles with diaper need, and 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend the available supply. And whereas a daily or weekly supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs that enable children to thrive and parents to work. And whereas without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention resulting in medical costs, and parents may be prevented from accessing childcare needed to go to work or school, thereby destabilizing the family's economic prospects and well-being. And whereas the people of Evanston recognize that diaper need is a public health issue, and addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's, the community's families, and improved health for children, thus ensuring all children and families have access to the basic necessities required to thrive and reach their full potential. And whereas Evanston is proud to be home to trusted community-based organizations, including Bundled Blessings Diapers, that recognize the importance of diapers in ensuring health and providing economic stability for families, and thus distribute diapers to families through various channels, now therefore I do hereby proclaim the week of September 23 through 29, 2024, as National Diaper Need Awareness Week in the city of Evanston. And I thank Bundled Blessings Diaper Bank, their staff, volunteers, and donors for their courageous service during the crisis, and encourage citizens to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and support those organizations that collect and distribute diapers to families struggling with diaper need so that all of Evanston's childrens and families can thrive and reach their full potential. And I believe we have a volunteer, Mr. Bailey? All right, Dexter Bailey, a volunteer from Bundled Blessings is here to receive the proclamation. If y'all would please give Mr. Bailey a hand as well.
I'd like to invite everyone, including all the members of the council, to come and pack diapers anytime. We have wonderful cooperation from the high school, the Rotary, a lot of other people that come and actually put in the volunteer hours. And I also like to emphasize the fact that one of the major problems is that we don't have funding from the national government that allows women to buy diapers. They can't use their stamps or things like that for diapers. But here in Evanston, we've managed to distribute 40,000 diapers this month, and we're doing it every month, and in the 10, 11 years, we've contributed over 2 million diapers to the kinds of organizations that are here taking care of children in the, in the city. Thank you.
That concludes the mayor's announcements and proclamations. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Clerk Mendoza, I'm excited to announce a couple of significant awards the city has won in the past week. First, the United States Department of Transportation has awarded the city of Evanston a $985,000 grant, Innovative Finance and Asset Concession Grant. This competitive transit-oriented development grant will be used to begin implementing the recommendations of Putting Assets to Work Strategy, which was adopted by the city council last spring. The grant will allow staff to leverage local, regional, national, real estate, and urban planning experience, expertise to implement the Putting Assets to Work recommendations. This will include an extensive community engagement process coupled with market-driven revenue opportunities for Evanston taxpayers. Many thanks to city engineer Laura Biggs and economic development manager Paul Zamosak for their contributions to this grant application and process. I'd also like to congratulate the city's economic development team on their strategic plan award from the Illinois Chapter of the American Planning Association for their One Howard Street Economic Recovery Plan. Key features of this plan include anti-displacement recommendations, pedestrian-focused design, place-making, and social equity, and public engagement. Again, congratulations to the teams on that. And then also wanted to make a quick announcement regarding Harley-Clark. The proposals related to the future of Harley-Clark were initially anticipated to be on tonight's city council agenda for consideration. The city has received significant interest from the public, and we are working to release the proposals by Wednesday this week for the community to review. At this time, we tentatively anticipate bringing this topic back to the city council for consideration on October 14. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
First of all, thank you for the shout-out and the proclamation. I really appreciate it. That was very thoughtful. And I do not have any email public comment, but I did want to shout out the city manager for coming to support celebrations last Thursday for Hispanic Heritage Month. That meant a lot to a lot of people. Couldn't stop hearing about how much people loved you there. So that was really nice. And, and also, just a shout-out to all of our, you know, workers that identify as Hispanic, and all of our community members, and I hope to see them feel, especially our community members, they feel more welcomed and, you know, thank you so much for the work you've done about language access for our residents. That really truly means a lot. And I think the city is definitely making a lot of strides towards including our Latino community and into our processes, and it's been really nice to see all the staff here try to do more outreach in Spanish. We have the budget in Spanish now. We've had Envision Evanston in Spanish. We've had a lot of different things happening to get feedback from the community, so I urge the community to get involved if they're not. I also want to give a shout-out to, you know, the, you know, indigenous women that made my shirt, although they're probably not listening to this. My shirt from Oaxaca, my earrings, and my necklace is from Oaxaca. And I expect to see some councilmembers that I know own a wayavera. Councilmember Reed and Councilmember Harakaris, seeing them at a wayavera before, hoping that they bring one and use one during Hispanic Heritage Month to encourage other people to wear clothes of their customs in our meetings and, you know, know that they feel, you know, welcome to come here, their wayaveras or their shirts. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda will be quick, but I just want to call it out because I think it's here for the first time, and I think it's going to be here forever. Approval of virtual councilmember participation. As I understand it, the public access counselor of the attorney general has recently clarified that in order to fully comply with the Open Meetings Act, not only must councilmembers who participate remotely have one of a fixed list of reasons, but that there be, I believe, a vote of the council to allow that to go on. So in the future, we'll skip this agenda item when, like tonight, no one's participating remotely, but should anyone be participating remotely, will be required to have the reason stated and then a, and then a vote taken by council to permit that. Councilmember Nusma?
Would the same rule apply at the meetings for standing committees?
I would imagine, so, let me actually broaden out the question. I would imagine the ruling applies to any public body that's covered by OMA. Is that right?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. That is correct.
All right, thanks.
Thanks very much. The next item on our agenda is public comment. This evening, we have, I think when I've deduced, I think we have literally exactly 15 people, so everyone gets exactly three minutes. We begin, as always, with those who signed up on this piece of paper, beginning with Olin Wilson Thomas, who will be followed by Valerie Kretschmer, and then Patrick Donnelly.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about bike lanes. The city of Evanston through Envision Evanston 2045 is considering installing a road diet on Ridge Avenue, giving each direction of travel one lane with a turn lane in the middle. The city plans to use the extra space from the road diet to increase lane width, which would create an even more hostile environment to pedestrians and cyclists just by the way the, the road is designed. This is because wider lanes lead to faster-moving traffic. Makes sense when you think about it. People feel more comfortable going fast when the road is more forgiving and when they don't have to worry as much about staying in their lane. This has been proven in countless studies over the years. And while this may sound like an improvement when you first think about it, cars going faster only benefits one group of people, the people in the cars. Now, some may argue that they don't feel safe driving on Ridge and that the road is too narrow, and I understand that it can feel unsafe driving at high speeds on Ridge, but the answer shouldn't be to make the road wider. It should be to slow down. It's time for the city to realize that it's not in the residents' best interest to consider road throughput before everything else. So what do I propose we do instead of widening lanes? Put in a two-way protected bike lane. This will lead to increased bike ridership in the city, which has been shown to have economic, social, and health benefits for residents. A person on the bike is more likely to wave to a neighbor they pass. A person on the bike is more likely to swing by a local bakery on their way home from work to grab a loaf of bread for dinner. A person on the bike is more likely to live longer and feel better each day. Bikes are good for cities. And building bike infrastructure isn't just the right thing to do to show that Evanston cares about the needs of all of its residents. It's also a chance to make Evanston a safer and more vibrant place. Evan, Ridge, excuse me, Ridge Avenue right now is not a very safe place to be a cyclist or a pedestrian, but if the lanes on Ridge get widened, it will become even more dangerous because the fatality rate for a pedestrian doubles when hit by a car going 30 miles an hour as opposed to a car going 20. If we widen the lanes on Ridge, cars will go faster and people will get hurt. We need to stop seeing Ridge and other busy roads as a way for people to get around in their cars, and we need to start seeing these roads as something that can impact the community positively if we get them right. This is a city for people, not cars. Let's act like it. Thank you.
I just want to give a reminder that there are elections in 2029. Well put. The next speaker is Valerie Kretschmer, who will be followed by Patrick Donnelly.
Yeah, Valerie Kretschmer. I live at 807 Davis Street. I've been a 37-year resident of Evanston and been a planning and real estate consultant for over 40 years, though recently retired this summer. The reason I'm here is I read in the agenda that the council is considering adding $60,000 to the budget for the Envision Evanston plan for an additional two public hearings that HDR would be involved in. First I read this, I thought, well, maybe there's a typo. Can't be $60,000 for two public hearings. That just is highway robbery. You know, I've worked on lots of public projects, and I've never seen anything like that ever. This is just fleecing the city. So I would urge you to use the competent staff that you have in the planning department if we need to have additional meetings. I'm not trying to disparage at all the work that HDR is doing. I've been at a number of their meetings, and they've done a very competent job in what they're doing, but $60,000 is just insane. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Patrick Donnelly.
Ooh, I support Olin's bike lane comments. That was pretty cool. Start my timer. Greetings, Mayor Biss, city council, and city staff. My name is Patrick Donnelly. I'm from Eleanor's Ward. I'm here tonight to tell you a little bit about Evanston Lake House and Gardens. We have a 15-member board, 2,500 followers, and several thousand residents on our email list, and we all care about what's happening with Harley-Clark. I'm speaking tonight because we fear the decision about Harley-Clark is being made without your alderman input, and we, we are hoping that all of the RFP submitters can have a chance to submit, to present to you guys, city council, the decision-makers. I'm here to ask for your permission to present for 15 minutes at some point. I think the other RFP submitters would like that, too. We were especially excited to see so many new aldermen during this new RFP cycle. Jonathan Nusma, and Claire Kelly, and Devon Reed, and Juan, and Chrissy, you five replaced the demo alderman that wanted to rip the place down, so we were especially excited to present to you guys and tell you about our plan. Bobby Burns, I think I first met you at a Harley-Clark meeting in 2014, so I know you know a lot about this. You also have 94% of all black residents in your ward, so we have a great equity plan for Harley-Clark and for the community use plan, so I know we wanted to present that to you and anyone else who cares. Tom, Melissa, and Eleanor, you guys know all about Harley-Clark, and you guys were always supportive of a community use plan as far as I know. We would be especially excited to present our community use plan to you, the decision-makers, especially because we recently partnered up with a finance entity that's brought in over $1 billion for charter schools and wants to work with us and cares about Harley-Clark. Harley-Clark is the only building on the lakefront. Northwestern has most of the lakefront, so we think it's especially important that what goes in Harley-Clark as the last building, our only city building on the lakefront, we think it's especially important that something good goes in there, something to benefit the residents and the community, and something that doesn't push away the people that already use the park. Please allow us some amount of time because we've heard things through FOIA emails that maybe the decision's been made, and we just, we just thought that maybe you guys would want to help make that decision and give us an opportunity and the other RFP submitters a chance to talk about what the future of Harley-Clark is. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That concludes the list of people who signed up on the sheet of paper, so we now move to those who signed up online to speak in person, beginning with David Mensch, who will be followed by John Kennedy, and then Jane McCarthy.
How y'all doing this evening?
Good.
I'm all right. And listen, Valerie, 37 years, a long time, but I've lived in Evanston long enough that I used to ride the North Shore train from the Howard Street L Station to visit my grandparents in Milwaukee. That's how old I am. And what I'm going to talk about today is the 100 block of Kalan Avenue where I live, and I've lived for at least 50 years. There's, there was a proposal, and the city manager spoke, talked about it. They want to cut the south end of the 100 block of Kalan Avenue and have all the traffic go through the alleys north of Howard Street. Well, we think, we in that area happen to think that's a bad idea. Alderman Reed was there Friday night, and I know some of my neighbors expressed that to him. Unfortunately, Alderman Reed had the meeting on the night of Evanston's homecoming, so I wasn't able to be there because, of course, I was Evanston's homecoming. I have nine, six reasons, and then two suggestions. Number one, the loss of nine parking spaces in that neighborhood is not going to help. We already don't have enough parking spaces due to the age of the apartment buildings because the apartment buildings in that neighborhood were built long before there were zoning laws that required the number of parking. Number two, and I've sent some pictures to the commissioner here, and I will send them to Councilman Reed also later, but emergency vehicles, especially the large fire trucks with the ladders, needed to fight fires in those apartment buildings, wouldn't be able to make the turn from Kalan Avenue into the alleys to fight those fires. Number three, there are six school buses in the morning and six school buses in the afternoon that go down the 100 block of Kalan Avenue, picking up children and distributing them to the various schools in Evanston, and they don't, they won't be able to make that turn either. Number four, those, the north alley of Howard Street is used seven days a week by delivery trucks and garbage trucks, and there are very profitable businesses on Howard Street there, the auto parts store, the Palm House, and Peckish Pig. They get deliveries every day. And then, of course, the garbage trucks are there three or four times a week, including Evanston's garbage trucks. Cleanliness is, would also be a concern there. And there's already a lot of nighttime partying and drinking, which a little park there would certainly exacerbate, and I sent pictures, like I said, to the commissioner, and I will send them to the Alderman Reed. This morning, when I, I knew I was going to talk today, took a walk out there, liquor bottles all over, beer bottles all over, everything else. So stuff is already happening down there, and I can't imagine it would get any better if we put benches in. Last but not least, I suggest that they take the money that they want to spend on that park and either A, attract new businesses to fill the 25 vacant storefronts that are between the L Station and Custer Avenue, or B, why don't you establish a joint Chicago and Evanston Police Walking Beat from the L Station to Ridge Avenue? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is John Kennedy, who will be followed by Jane McCarthy, and then Linda Damashek.
Good evening, John Kennedy, 3rd Ward. I want to first extend congratulations to Luke with the decision to make all three proposals public. I think this is very important, and it's been kind of what we've seen over the years. You know, this is an asset of Evanston, and Evanston is made up of the citizens that you represent. And what happens to that building is something that needs to be fleshed out in a public environment. Speaking of the FOIA, about two weeks ago, a resident FOIA'd some information, and he found that a guy named Noel Abbott, who is heading up the ratio, one of the proposals, had seen through a simple Google search, a document on, on the city's website that basically was a draft of a resolution for this council. And he, he then sent this over to a staff member. And let me read you the specifics of this proposal. Quote, "authorizing the city manager to negotiate a lease agreement with Celadon Corp. Construction Corporation, NFP, for the adoptive use of rehabilitation of 2603." The staff member then forwarded this on to a woman named Allison Lipsiger. Allison then sent it on to two additional staff people with this comment, quote, "major red alert!" Do we know what we can do about this? Thanks. So what conclusions can we draw from this? Seems that the winner of the Harley-Clark RFP process has already been determined, before even this council saw the RFPs. Are we living in a Third World city where decisions are made and then a rubber-stamped council passes them? I don't think so. So what do we do? Start is, the three proposals go public. In addition to that, there are several committees that ought to be reviewed. Parks and Rec, because this is going to affect the beachgoers and the parks, Preservation, because this is a preservation building, and Equity and Empowerment, that have already requested this. This ought to take a couple of months. There's no reason to rush this through in a special order of business, none. There's no reason to rush this through in a special order of business, none. So I hope that this council takes that under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jane McCarthy, who will be followed by Linda Damaschek, and then Kimberly Holmes-Ross.
Hi, I'm Jane McCarthy. I've lived in the Seventh Ward for 30 years. I am on the Evanston Community Lake House and Gardens Board Committee. The lack of transparency in the latest cycle of the Harley-Clark process makes me both embarrassed of and frustrated with our city government. Decisions regarding the future of Harley-Clark should not be made without clear and honest communication with the people of Evanston. This type of process will discourage people from volunteering their valuable time for city projects if, in the end, they are not included or valued when decisions are made. I am happy to hear that the proposals will be shared. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Linda Damaschek, who will be followed by Kimberly Holmes-Ross.
Hello, my name is Linda Damaschek, and I'm here to talk about the transparency regarding the Harley-Clark proposals. I've been involved with this issue since 2013. Shocking, but true. Had some early meetings with then-State Representative Bis about this, so we go way back on this. I was a member of Mayor Tisdale's Harley-Clark Citizens Committee. So we go back on this as well. I want to emphasize that the residents of Evanston deserve and expect transparency and full information on all of the proposals. I'm thinking, because I'm thinking about all the years I've been involved in this, I'm thinking specifically about the 400 people that came to three different public meetings where they were asked, "What kind of public uses would you like to see this building have?" I know they really, really want to know about these proposals. I'm also thinking about the 21,000 referendum voters who supported keeping this building for public use. And P.S., that was 85% of each one of your wards. This was not supported by just one part of the city. 85% of each ward's residents voted to support keeping this building for public use. So I really want to have you keep all that in mind. This has been a tremendous amount of so many people's time and care and thought and commitment to, you know, the public use. Anyway, I encourage public presentations from all the proposers directly before City Council so that all the residents that I've mentioned previously in my comments will get to hear themselves what are the pros and cons of all of them. And also, a fair process. That is just so paramount, and I really, really hope that you all really personally think deeply about this. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kimberly Holmes-Ross.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, Mayor, City Manager Luke, City Clerk Mendoza. I am Kimberly Holmes-Ross, former resident of the Fifth Ward, current resident of the Second Ward, and Executive Director at Evanston Cradle to Career. I am here tonight to urge you to approve the Pathways to Wellness Health Initiative. It will serve some of our most vulnerable citizens here in Evanston, long time coming, and really, really a step towards some repair in the Fifth Ward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the in-person portion of this evening's public comment. We now move on to those who signed up to speak online, beginning with Elena Harrington, who will be followed by Tricia Connolly, and then Pastor Monte Dillard. Ms. Harrington, you should be able to unmute now. Oh, there you go.
Hello. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today, guys. I am here in support of the Pathways to Wellness Initiative as well. There are just so many people in the Evanston community who don't have access to care, more importantly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tricia Connolly, who will be followed by Pastor Monte Dillard, and then Robert Munro.
Good night. Excuse me. Good evening, City Manager Stowe, Mayor Bis, Clerk Mendoza, and City Council members. Tonight, I'm here to make a statement on behalf of Community Alliance for Better Government regarding Harley-Clark. As a few of you know, it's been an incredibly continuous, long journey regarding this building. We recognize this is not on tonight's agenda, but as you've already heard, there was an alarming FOIA regarding the lease and rumblings last week that it might be added as a special order of business tonight. And now, thankfully, tonight, City Manager Stowe has acknowledged the concerns brought before you from the public. CABG is asking each one of you to think about why it's important to ensure that plans for using public land and public buildings needs to include input from the public, especially those who historically get left out of the conversation. Excuse me. Please consider what would equity look like on the Evanston lakefront, including our publicly-owned building Harley-Clark. CABG is requesting the following from the City Council. Slow down this process and make a plan for groups to present their proposals for Harley-Clark in advance with the public. Make sure the public process is transparent and there is the ability for the public to weigh in and get questions and concerns addressed in a suitable timeframe. Outcome: Share data with the community based on the input you received. This is important. We are all owners of this building. This is the only public building on the Evanston lakefront. Year after year, when Harley-Clark has been discussed, there has been overwhelming public interest in this building and the land surrounding it. We have had a referendum, community meetings, and a lakefront master plan to help guide us. Once the decision is made, the future will be memorialized with a 40-year lease. Let's make sure we get it right with the public's interest and access at the forefront. I'll leave you with this quote from Reimagining the Civic Commons. "Encouraging the use of public spaces begins with an intentional invitation. For people of all backgrounds to believe they belong in public spaces, they must first experience a welcome. In order to spark deeper civic engagement and provide socioeconomic mixing, public places must reinforce a sense of membership for everyone." Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Pastor Monte Dillard, who will be followed by Robert Munro, and then Mary Rozinski. I believe Pastor Dillard is not on the Zoom at this time. So if that's right, then we'll move ahead with Robert Munro, who will be followed by Mary Rozinski, and then Sue Lolbach. It looks like Mr. Munro is also not on the Zoom at this time, so we'll move ahead with Mary Rozinski, who will be followed by Sue Lolbach, and then Robin Rue Simmons.
I thank you very much. I agree with all the transparency things that have been brought up today. It is just disgraceful that Harley-Clark is not being addressed, but now it will be, thank you, Mr. Stowe. I actually had a comment on a couple of things. One is, as I spoke at Public Works, the TIF funds are tax dollars that have been diverted to a TIF fund for the city. And I'm not sure that diverting them a second place for the school is right at this moment in time, but I think we need to figure out what's going on with the school before approving funds going over there for lighting. Second of all, regarding the money for the Laramie Park, $94,000 to fix the structure. My question is, are all four of the structures beings rotted? Or are just the one? And what can we do as a city to make our pre-inspections of our renovation projects better so that we don't have these $100,000, $200,000 chain donors coming in? But the most important thing that's on my mind right now is affordable housing. And I'm not sure that buying the 1830 Brown, or 1833 Brown, makes sense without more information. Or at least, you should get more information before making a decision, because we don't know how big the units are. You're talking about nine houses, nine units. At this point, it looks like it's about $500,000 a unit. And I had suggested that if we could get affordable housing right now and buy a building that I have nothing to do with on Central Street, that's 14 units, that would come out to about $193,000 per unit, and they're 800,000 square feet, or $214 a square foot cost. And then figure you're going to put money in, probably, but it's a new boiler, and it's a great location, and it would be very apropos and ready to go. So I'm just saying, before we throw money at projects that we don't have specified table, the public really needs to know how big the units are, what the estimate costs are, because sometimes it feels as a resident that numbers are pulled out of the air and there's no written estimates for anyone to work with. So I appreciate, or to evaluate, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker... Sorry. The next speaker is Sue Lolbach, who will be followed by Robin Rue Simmons.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sue Lolbach. I work at Connections for the Homeless in Evanston. And I wanted to speak in favor of the purchase of the land at 1833 Brown Avenue. This proposal tonight is just for the purchase of the land, not for the specific buildings. And I am pleased to see that the partner on this will be Community Partners for Affordable Housing. They do a really good job of working with communities to look at what should be built there. And if they can put nine affordable units on this, I think that is a really great use of money from the Affordable Housing Fund. Thank you.
The next speaker is Robin Rue Simmons.
Good evening, leaders. I'm here. My name is Robin Rue Simmons. I'm a longtime Fifth Ward resident, Chairwoman of the Evanston Reparations Committee. And I would like to support the comments of Kimberly Holmes-Ross in support of Pathways to Wellness, and ask that you support this initiative. I understand that after two years of communication with the city and involvement with the data walks and listening to residents most in need, this serves a need. It will help respond to our 13-year life expectancy gap, racial gap here in Evanston. And I've had the opportunity to experience the services firsthand. And so I'm a strong advocate for the work. I want to thank Fifth Ward resident Natisha for convening such professionals and experts and community member voices that have informed the proposal, and I ask that you support it going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for the evening. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that members would like to pull from the Consent Agenda? I'm told A16, there's a request for entry in action.
Yes, please.
A2, A9, HS1, and A11, please.
A2, A9, A11, and HS1?
Let's pull A10, please.
So at this time, I have items A2, A9, A10, A11, and A16, and HS1?
A15?
A15?
A7?
A7?
And A9, did we already?
Yeah, we did. So this time, the list is A2, A7, A9, A10, A11. Oh, I see, I wrote 11 twice, and it's just utterly... Sorry, Councilmember Kelly, did you say A15? You said A15. Ah, and my 5 looks like a 1, and that has been sending me into a tailspin up here. Tailspin averted. I apologize. The items that have been removed are A2, A7, A9, A10, A11, A15, A16, and HS1. Are there other items members would like to see removed before we move forward? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion?
I move approval of the Consent Agenda, minus the said items.
Second.
Councilmember Hadakaris moves approval of the Consent Agenda with the following omissions: A2, A7, A9, A10, A11, A15, A16, HS1. Councilmember Nusma, seconds. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Wen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Hadakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the Consent Agenda, with eight exceptions previously enumerated, is approved. Councilmember Burns, do you have a motion on item HS1?
Yeah, I move approval of item HS1, $400,000 ARPA funding allocation to establish a health initiative, Evanston Pathway to Wellness, that will help support and improve the health outcomes of Evanston's most vulnerable residents.
Second. Councilmember Burns moves approval of this allocation to establish a health initiative. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Suffredin?
Yeah, I had asked this of staff earlier, and I don't know if Ike's here or who the appropriate person to ask is, but what is our plan for future funding? Are we prepared for this to be successful and be able to continue it if it is? Do we have a likelihood of success in finding funding, either in our budget or from outside organizations? I think the worst outcome would be that this proves to be successful and there's no plan for funding it on an ongoing basis.
So we have people here who can respond to that question, but I'm not sure. It was directed to Director Ogbo, so I want to...
No, I mean, I spoke to Ike. Whoever can answer it. I mean, here's the question, right? There's two possible outcomes. If this doesn't work, and it was a $400,000 ambitious thing that didn't work, or that it works very well, and then now we need to find funding going forward. And I want to know what the likely place is that we can find funding going forward. Like I said, I think the worst outcome would be that this is successful and then unfunded in the future.
Yeah, and real quick, Natisha, before you respond, I guess the first thing I want to say is, we've been working on this for as long as we have because we wanted to answer that very question Mayor Bis expressed many months ago, that that was a concern he had. And that's why, kind of midway through, we decided to add the research component. Dr. Lynch from Rush is here, and she'll speak in a moment. But to me, in order to set ourselves up for this to continue to be funded, whether it's by the city, insurance companies, which fund this type of work all the time, but they only fund, you know, interventions, operations that are well-established and have shown to be successful, you have to show that there was a kind of rigorous, scientifically sound investigation of the intervention so that in the end, we can say, yep, not only did people get healthier, but we know it's because, in result of the interventions that took place. And that's why we have Dr. Lynch and Natisha here. But Dr. Lynch from Rush, what we're proposing is that she would be our lead investigator on this program.
Okay, so I'll ask my question again. Or I'll let you... Sorry, but I guess we all get what I'm asking. If it succeeds, where would future money come from? What's our likelihood of getting it? And again, because the worst-case scenario is that this succeeds, and there's no money for it in the future.
For sure. Thank you, and that's a great question. Thank you all for your time this evening. My name is Natisha Waldron. I helped to design Pathways to Wellness. I am professionally a healthcare administrator, and so we have a bunch of professionals at the table. What we have done over the past couple of years in designing Pathways to Wellness is we have been at the table with community organizations that feel that this work is valuable. What we have done is we have honed in our focus on the works of hypertension. The reason we focus on hypertension is because right now it is the leading focus of North Shore University Health Systems, formerly known as Endeavor Health, which we are at the table with their lead researcher. She sits on our advisory board. We're currently in discussion with North Shore to figure out... We're currently in discussion with North Shore to figure out, they're happy to help. We also have Erie Health in partnership with us. And we are positioning ourselves to bill insurances for the people that are insured so that we can have reimbursement back into the program.
Okay, so we don't have any like firm commitments for future funding, but we have a lot of reasonable prospects?
Well, right now, Endeavor Health is willing to isolate a couple of full-time employees to contribute to the program. We've partnered with Rush for the lead investigation. The reason that we are turning this into a research is because this is then peer reviewed. Peer reviewed articles and studies are able to be backed financially. And so we have done the work necessary and had the conversations necessary to see who is willing to engage this project here in the community. And because hypertension and health inequity is just a big matter on the hearts of, of our local health systems, they are willing to, to commit to assisting us going forward.
Okay, so it...
Do we have a dollar amount? No.
No, I, I'm asking more like, do we have a reasonable belief that there's a pathway to funding this?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reed?
I just, this has been something that through Councilmember Burns, I've been following for some time. I just want to say thank you to Natisha and the whole team and Councilmember Burns and all of the folks who are part of this. This came to Human Services, I believe, quite some time ago.
Twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's been a long work in progress. And, you know, I, I agree with, I mean, I, I kind of agree with Councilmember Suffordin in that, that it would be a terrible thing if this were successful and we didn't have the funding to, to, to push it forward. And so I think, you know, if this, if these interventions are successful, it almost gives us a mandate to continue to fund this and find partners that can help us offset that cost. So I, I think that's a good problem to have, and, and that's a problem I'm willing to wade into. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Harris?
Good evening. So the last time we met, I remember it was a much higher dollar amount than I was never going to be in favor.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so how did we get to the four hundred thousand, please? I have a couple of questions, but that's number one.
Okay. The, the first and obvious response to that is that our ARPA funds are now very limited. And so we are asking that you earmark the ARPA funds to serve the purpose of health inequity. We went around the city and we did data walks to identify an issue. And so now this is a response, a comprehensive program that is going to answer to serving the people of Evanston that are most vulnerable with health inequities. So that is really ultimately the response. We, we worked with what was left. There are several people, you know, in the city. This program is designated to serve one hundred and fifty residents in Evanston that have been identified in a need. Of course, we want to serve many more, but we have been able to reallocate funds, make some reductions, get some items donated as far as man hours, human resources. And so we've been able to identify some partnerships that is going to make it possible for us to do more with less.
Okay, I'm just looking at my math. Thank you. Then my next question is, I heard you say Endeavor is providing some of that. So did that also help reduce the cost? Because I remember some of the money went to the overhead of, well, not overhead, but administrative.
Yes. So what we have done, so we, we have probably two doctors at the table on, on the design of this project. We have several doctors on our advisory board that have really donated their time. They're willing to oversee the direction of the project, feeling that we are servicing from a position of fully qualified individuals. And so a lot of the time that it's going to take and the man hours that we were initially going to have to expense have now been donated. Our conversation with Endeavor Health is scheduled to continue every third Tuesday of the month. And they are having discussions because they have just launched a community health team. And their focus is hypertension. So they see this as a great opportunity to partner, to utilize those community health workers that they have designated in time. And so they are willing to write in the design of this program into the work and the focus that Endeavor is doing. They are also partnered with Rush Hospital, which is where our lead investigator is from. So it really kind of came together almost divinely so that we, we are able to, like I said, do more with less.
Okay, thank you. And one, one last question. Quit calling me yes, ma'am. You're making me feel...
Yes, councilmember.
Thank you. I got hypertension now, no, I'm just kidding. I forgot trying to be funny. And how did we get, so we got the data and the hundred and fifty residents through the census tract?
So the hundred and fifty residents, one, the qualifiers is that they have to be from Evanston. They need to have a diagnosis of hypertension. The goal on the point system is that they are from one of the affected census tracts. And what we have done, based on the concerns that came when we went to Health and Human Services, is to make sure that we are identifying residents despite the war that they live in if they have the other qualifiers that are intact. They will not be excluded at all from programming. There's actually some time where that we will actually do a screening. So residents that qualify will have access to that screening. And, you know, no one will be disqualified except outside of the hundred fifty individuals. But our goal was to make sure that the selection process for these individuals is equitable as this is a program that is designed, you know, to really combat inequity, so.
And it'd be first come, first share? First, sir?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember Revel, followed by Kelly.
Well, I just want to also say to Councilmember Harris that I think one reason may be that the program is less expensive because it's just a one-year program. Because initially, it was going to be a two-year program, which obviously would have had more cost. And I'm really delighted that, about the research component and Dr. Lynch is involved in a similar kind of program in Chicago with, you know, with an intervention and working with the kind of population that I think we're targeting here in, here in Evanston. So I, this program's gone through multiple, multiple discussions, and I think it's, you've really come to a good place.
We, I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. Thank you for, for putting together this proposal. I think it's great we're looking at, at addressing the health disparities in our community. So I think this is really important. I would just ask, do we, so I want to support this. Is there any sort of ballpark breakdown? I know we have Whole Women Fitness, Onda Collective. I just, I think it's helpful for residents when we just see, even if it's, you know, not exactly a ballpark breakdown on how the four hundred thousand is allocated.
Yes, absolutely. Let me see what was included in the memo as far as a breakdown, but there is a broken down budget. Would you like for me to quickly go over that with you?
Sure. Yeah, it would be great in general if those budgets are included in our packets. Yeah, if it's not too long, if you could just...
No, it's not.
And maybe email it to us, that would be great.
Absolutely, we can do that. So is your preference that it be emailed to you and not?
I don't know how long it is.
Oh, it's not that long.
Okay.
Hold on one second for me.
Yeah, so both, I guess.
For a quick summary, in order to research this project effectively, for the investigate, investigators, the lead investigator, time allocation for them to properly conduct the research over twelve months. And that is not in consideration to pre and post. It will be a couple hundred thousand dollars in order for us to have that research partner. What we avoid in having the lead investigator from Rush is to come in is we avoid, avoid a lot of subsequent fees that come after that. So it is inclusive. The rest of the funding will go to equipment, will go to the remote patient monitoring, which basically provides a 4G device for individuals that have hypertension so that they will be able to automatically upload their data to a cloud that will be tracked and trended on their behalf. I believe the devices for this program, the costs are about twenty thousand dollars for the devices. The devices are fairly expensive because we have to consider social determinants of health and to make sure that people that do not have an internet service, they will be able to upload their information. People being able to access the cloud is a service fee. I can't remember what that amount is.
Yeah, I think if we were, if we could get it emailed...
Absolutely.
So about two hundred thousand is for the lead investigator?
Absolutely. For, for her staff?
For her.
For, it, I mean, that really includes about, probably about four to five individuals that she's bringing on with her.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Great. Yes, thank you. That would be great.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm fully supportive and want to thank everybody who's devoted so much time and energy to this. I just want to highlight for the record, it was mentioned, but I, I want to shine a light on the disparity in life expectancy in this particular geographic region is thirteen years compared to other neighborhoods in Evanston. Like, that is adjacent neighborhoods.
Yeah, three minutes, three minutes away.
That is a glaring example of historic inequity. And I'm really happy that the city has identified this problem and responding to it by allocating some resources and involving partners in a collaborative approach here. So I certainly hope that this one-year program will lead to some ongoing, you know, funding, ongoing resources from whatever, you know, source we can come up with until that thirteen year discrepancy is down to zero.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for acknowledging that. I wanted to pause in the moment and, when we started the design of this program, my mother and grandmother were here, and they're not. That very health disparity has impacted my family. My grandmother, at seventeen years of age, died of a massive heart attack, two years shy of her sixtieth birthday. My mother died July twentieth of chronic illness. Things that were preventable. I mean, this really impacts Dr. Kang, who designed the portal, designed the portal in response to her father having a massive stroke. Dr. Kim, I went and I spoke at her father's funeral three years ago when we started the design of this program, massive heart attack. This is preventable, but it's also ingrained in our culture. There's a lot of miseducation. So we're not just here to do this because we're professionals and the city of Evanston has money. We literally lived this. And so generationally, my children are impacted. And what, what, this passion that I'm talking to you today is really going to make sure that we're doing what's right to impact our community in a positive way. Because, you know, I would have loved for my grandmother to have a ninetieth birthday, but instead it was cut short at seventy-six. I mean, she died a, a very miserable death from diabetes. And so the education that's on the team, Dr. Lynch being here, Dr. Kang, Dr. Kim, there are four instructors, they're certified. These are individuals who are also impacted, not just in my home. I can just line up our team and, and show you that there are several individuals that have the same story. People that sit on, on this committee with you, black and brown, they have family members that are not here. And we just want to change that. And so we're committed to doing the work. A lot of the budget cuts, I took them. You know, I don't, I don't, it's not really necessarily about the money, but we do need to make a change if we intend on being here. So that's what this is for. And no, it's not enough long-term, but it is a good seed. It will be enough to build the foundational efforts that we need. We have people prepared to fundraise for us because they believe in this. And, you know, we have Evanston Owner Partnership, we have Cradle to Career Partnership, the, the stakeholders in the community that are doing the, the heavy lifting and, you know, the Fifth Ward and other impacted communities, they're ready to, to grind out with us and make sure that we have enough to do this work. We can bill insurance. I, I serve in the hospital setting. I do this work every day for a salary. So you're, you're not dealing with people that have come along with some great idea. We're, we're professionals and we're going to make sure that the people that we are called to serve are going to be served well. So thank you guys for hearing from us today.
And Mayor, I just didn't want to, we have two guests in particular that I don't think have introduced themselves. If Hannah Pick, if she's on the line, and Dr. Lynch could just quickly introduce themselves before you call the vote.
Sure. Hi, good evening. My name is Hannah Pick. I'm the founder of Onda Collective. We're a human-centered design and innovation consultancy focused on positive social impact. And for the past three years, we've been working with University of Chicago and UI Health on chronic conditions, disease management programs. We've built a successful hypertension program at UI Health that we are continuing to add additional components to. And we've received grants and funding from the hospital system as well. And they've continued to fund it as we are getting it further scaled and implemented. And we're also in talks with several insurance companies about funding it moving forward now that we've done the proper research and we have data to back the pilots that we've done. Those companies are interested and they're especially interested in the data that they can get when there's a partnership between the community and the hospital system.
Thank you. And Dr. Lynch?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Beth Lynch, and I'm a professor of family and preventive medicine at Rush University Medical Center. I've been for the past about twenty years working on development of interventions to address cardiovascular disease in black neighborhoods and communities in Chicago to address the life expectancy gap, which is in Chicago as well as in Evanston. And a number of those interventions have focused on reduction of blood pressure since that's one of the major causes of this life expectancy gap. And in fact, right now, we are running a blood pressure intervention in black churches throughout Chicago and also in some churches in Evanston. So I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have about the research side of it. I'm really excited to work on a project that is really driven by the community in this way and requested by the community and planned by the community. So that is the type of program that I think is the most likely to be successful. So I'm really looking forward, I hope, that we can work on this project together.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with four minutes left.
Sorry, I don't want to belive this anymore, but since some of the interventions were mentioned, I think we've got folks here who are going to be reporting about this. I'm pointing to you, you all. And I think maybe just sharing some of the interventions could be helpful for someone who's maybe not in the program and can just read about it and implement some of this stuff. So can we talk about some of the core interventions here?
Absolutely. So the core interventions are remote patient monitoring. Since Dr. Lynch has come on, she has altered the design a little bit to make sure that there is a pharmacist included in the work of the program. The benefit of having a pharmacist work in the program is that they can make alterations under the leadership of the doctor so that we don't have delays in getting the, the changes that we need to see in the points of the, of the blood pressure. Oftentimes, if you guys have ever been diagnosed with a disease, the, the first medication doesn't necessarily work. And so part of the research that has worked around the country is having a pharmacist that is part of the community, that looks like the people that they are serving, being able to intervene between the doctor as a liaison and be able to alter the medication so that there can be a, a, a more, excuse me, a quicker impact to the blood pressure that we are trying to target. Secondarily, there will be fitness and nutrition as well as meal prep. Finance, excuse me, pardon me, re-education and behavioral modification for disease management. And then there was some discussion of food stipend so that we, the, the community will be able to, if there was a social determinant of health and people are not able to afford the nutritious food, that they will be able to pay for that. the nutritious food, that they will be able to pay for that. Did I forget anything, Dr. Lynch?
I don't think so.
Yeah, thank you for that. So just.
And real quick, Mrs. Sheff, if you can also just add the community, because I think that's a big part of it, that they'll, I know there's a program that they'll have access to so they can support one another.
Oh, so there is a demographically focused groups that individuals will be placed in as they are inherited in the community. Basically providing them with the support they need. It's a peer support group so that people will be able to have discussions. It'll be supported by the community health workers to make sure that they have answers to the questions that they need 24 hours a day. It's really a group chat that has been proven to work in these interventions. We actually are utilizing it at Whole Woman Fitness right now. There's 30 individuals and they basically support one another, and it does lead to an increase in compliance.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
I can't. Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I can also speak to the nutrition component of the program from the program that we have running at UI Health. It's a six-week course that the dieticians run, but it entails hands-on cooking. Instead of being a food demo or a lecture, it's a peer-supported group program where the community decides what recipes that they would like to learn how to adapt to make them more heart-healthy. And then the dietitian helps adapt those recipes and teaches them how to make them healthier. They go to the grocery store and do a scavenger hunt to learn how to properly read nutrition labels in context rather than lecture. And then they actually cook the recipes and also go to a restaurant to learn how to order healthier as well. And that combined with food and if proper education, one-on-one beforehand and coaching allows people to set goals for themselves. And with a pharmacist and a community health worker in partnership, they can also address social determinants of health beforehand to make sure that they have access to what they need to actually prepare those meals.
Better said, Hannah. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will, I just want to, well, I have one last question. So the, did you all settle on the food stipend? Is there going to be a food stipend?
That depends on funds. But what we are, what we are working to do is through some of our community partnerships, better utilizing the fresh food in the community to be able to refer our members to, that are already receiving food stipends here in the community. So that's just deepening the partnership. We're already at the table having those discussions.
And as far as fitness, will there be gym memberships or some kind of?
Yes, so I actually own a business called Whole Woman Fitness. We cater to the mental, spiritual, physical, and emotional health of our individuals that we, that participate in the program. And so my staff will be responsible for the fitness and the re-education.
Okay. No, thank you on that. I just really just wanted to highlight that because we know, it was mentioned earlier that, you know, we're trying to solve for the high blood pressure, but the high blood pressure is caused by something that's not the, the.
Being still and eating wrong.
Exactly. Yeah. And so, you know, we know that a lot of these illnesses really come back to metabolic and mitochondrial health and the lack thereof. And so I think, I'm just really excited that it's not just focusing on the prescription side, which is important to manage symptoms now, but also really trying to change habits down the road and providing that support for folks to get their overall health in order. And so really excited about this.
Absolutely. I just wanted to respond to that. A lot of diagnosis for chronic illness, many people don't know how they got there. A lot of times you'll go to the doctor, they say you have this disease, take this medication. But what we do is we teach people via videos and we let them know how it's actually diabetes is developed in the body, hypertension. They're usually diagnosed together. And so we educate people on the changes that are happening to their body and how to actually move in the right direction and to balance it, of course, like you said, with medication, with relationships with your doctors. And a lot of people don't trust their doctors. And so that's why we're starting on the community level. We know about the history with America and doctors. It's an issue that if you have people that look like you that teach you how to advocate for yourself and ask the right questions, it does change outcomes. And so we are, you know, excited to advocate for the people of Evanston in this aspect.
Thank you.
It's still the case that no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Council Member Kelly with 4:15 left.
Thank you. Again, it's just so important that we're addressing health and healthcare disparities in our community. Obviously, the Affordable Care Act comes a very long way from doing that. So I'm glad we're moving forward with this, but I wonder, we're so lucky to have our own health department here in Evanston, and are we right now, do we, what do we do internally to address healthcare disparities and health disparities? Do we have any programs right now in our city?
Good day, members of the City Council. Ike Oboro, Director, Health and Human Services Department. We do have a program, there has been a longstanding program that we've ushered to our community. For those of us who've been in Evanston for a long time, who've participated in the program, it's called WOW. It is called We Are Working. Initially, it was only intended for women. Then in 2017, 2018, we revised it where every individual is now included, where we encourage physical activity and nutrition. Unfortunately, we didn't embark on it this year, but in 2023, we embarked on it. We're still working on, there's some elements of it that we want to flush out and reintroduce it and revamp the program come next year. So please be expected on that, stay tuned on that program. It is a program that has benefited our community members for the longest. It was actually created in 2007, but due to COVID and what have you, it wasn't implemented. But when we recovered from the height of COVID, it was implemented in 2023. Another program that we are also looking to embark on, which is of course not similar to the Partner, Partway to Wellness Program, is what we are calling at Health Hub. We're still working on that element, and it's a program that we're establishing that will cater to basic health screening and testing and COVID tests and you name it, that will be fashioning coming soon. There'll also be some nutrition classes, and it is not going to be designated for a designated amount of individuals. This is going to be open to all the community members to access these elements of the program. So we're hoping that we'll be launching that pretty soon. We're working with our community members, we are working with Ebenezer Church to get it established there. So please stay tuned on that, on that program.
Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. The funding is approved. Thanks so much for your work on this. This brings us now to item A2. Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion?
I'd like to move item A2, approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity. Councilmember Harris seconds. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Abstain.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against and one abstention, the motion carries and the credit card activity is approved. Now on item A7. Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion?
I'd like to move the approval of fiscal year 2025, one-year contract renewal with Park Hub for parking data reporting and analysis service.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of this one-year contract renewal. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Councilmember Kelly.
So, yeah, I just pulled this off just to have a better understanding of how, I understand that we want data, but like how, what's the benefit? Like, what if we didn't have this? What would, what would this mean for us, for residents?
Good evening, members of the City Council. Michael Rivera, Interim Administrative Services Director. So this, Park Hub utilizes their proprietary software to integrate between all of our parking management softwares that we have from our existing vendors. So they integrate with CalA, which is the pay boxes that we have in town. They integrate with Passport, which is our permitting systems. They integrate with our Park Evanston mobile app. They integrate with our ski data system. So it's basically one place to obtain all the data as their system pulls it in from different areas.
Thank you. I understand, right, that it's a data analytics program, but like if we, how do we, how does that, like if you didn't have it, what would happen?
If we didn't have it, you know, staff would have to, depending on, typically, we use this information to field requests from councilmembers like yourself on a routine basis. If we didn't have this information in one place, staff would take longer to produce the information because they'd have to go, depending on what the ask was, they would have to go to the independent backend systems and pull the data.
Okay, so it's mostly to respond to questions regarding?
Well, it also helps us plan for budgeted and things like that as well.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. That's all.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma is not here. Councilmember Burns is not here either. Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the contract renewal is approved. Now on item A9. Councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion?
I do.
I'm happy to move.
I'd like to move item A9, approval of funding for new foster school track and lighting.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of funding for new foster school track and lighting. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Sufferden?
Yeah, and I guess there's representatives from the district here. My first question is, is this something the district requested of the city or that the city brought to the district? And then my second question related to that is, is there any sort of written agreement regarding hours of access or anything for the track of the school?
So Kirby can talk about the MOU that?
Are you running the meeting? Like, this is the second time you've done this, man. I'm asking staff. I'm asking this guy.
Sufferden?
No, no. Hold on. I'd like, hold on one second.
Jump in.
I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Okay. My question. No, just hold on one second. No, no. Councilmember Sufferden.
My question. Did the district ask the city?
Councilmember Sufferden, please stop.
No, no, no. I have the floor.
Point of order.
Did the, okay. Did the district ask the city for this or did the city ask the district to do this?
Could you just please wait for one moment here? I'm going to ask all members of the council to treat each other with respect. Councilmember Sufferden has the floor and has the right to direct a question at anyone that he'd like to see answer the question. And if the person who jumps in is not the person you want, if you could reflect that concern in a respectful way, I'm sure we'll all be able to get you the answers you need. Mr. Callen?
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Biss, City Manager Stowe. In answer to your question, the city brought this to the district.
Okay. The city staff brought this to the district? Councilmember Burns?
Councilmember Burns.
Okay, was a track part of the plan all the way through this or did this come in later?
This, the track was an idea that Councilmember Burns brought to the district when talking to residents and as part of initiative to address health issues in the community and create a more open space that would be open to the community 24/7, 365.
Okay, is there any written agreement between the city and the district as it pertains to use hours of operation, when the lights will be on, access? Obviously, you're not going to have, I would presume, at a school, all-day access. There'll be times where the general public will not be able to use this amenity.
Correct, correct. As part of this process, we're engaging with, the approval of this process will move forward with an easement agreement and an access hours agreement. We're also working the district overall with the city and City Manager Stowe on access agreement and understandings for all city property that are joint school properties, such as with James Park and Dawes, with Washington Schools at Robert Crown. During the school day, the school property is for students for safety reasons. After school, when school lets out, the agreement and understanding is that it'll be available to the public, and this includes on the weekends. In terms of lighting, those stipulations still have to be determined, but I'm sure we'll follow standard lighting procedures that the city does and carries forward in other parks moving forward.
Okay, so the other school-park combos you mentioned, though, those, the recreation part is on the city property, or are you, are there other examples in the district where the city has paid for an amenity on district property?
I can't speak to that.
Okay. None of this work has been bid or has this work been bid out?
None of this work has been bid.
Okay. And is there any discussion? Obviously, there's nothing in this agreement that we're being asked to vote on tonight relating to cost overruns that may occur as this proceeds? Would the city be on the hook for those or would the district pay for those?
The work related to the track work?
Yeah, the track and the lighting.
The understanding that we have at the point at this moment is that the city and the district are evenly committed to support the investment around the lights, the field lights, at a 50/50 share, and that includes soft costs and hard costs. And that the track, the city will be responsible for the soft costs and the hard costs around the implementation of the track thereafter, since it's on district property, although a portion of the track does extend into the property of adjoining Fleetwood Jordan. The school will be on the hook and for maintenance and continued upkeep for the track.
Okay. And when you say the understanding is, that's not written down, that's an understanding between who and who?
Those are draft terms that we have shared with City Manager Stowe and the district administration.
Okay. I mean, this may be a good idea. This may be an amenity that all Evanston taxpayers can utilize, but there's not enough specificity here. And I'm not sure that this is ready for a vote. Is there a reason, based on the construction schedule, that this needs to be funded tonight?
Yes, because there are permits going in with the Midwest Roderick Reclamation District for the design of the field. We are installing a, basically a rain tank to hold rainwaters as part of our agreement and future design. That limits the amount of rainfall that goes into the city sewer system and into the canal. By doing so, we have to have agreement of that exact design, and the track changes that design. So we need to make sure that the track design is in the plans going into the bid for that related underwater retention system.
Okay. And has anybody from the Parks and Recreation Department been involved in these discussions or has the discussion been between who at the district and who at the city?
The city has reviewed formally all the plans regarding the rain detention system and the track.
I'm talking, but I mean with the track, like the, is the, this would be fundamentally a recreation amenity for residents. Has anybody from Parks and Recreation been involved in the discussion as far as you know?
We've had, we have a weekly Friday meeting where city staff join district staff and we review the plans and the initiatives that we are working on as we move through the process of building the school. So I don't know specifically, but I'm sure City Manager Stowe can speak to that.
That might be a more fair question for Luke. Is there anybody from the Parks and Recreation Department that's been involved in this?
I believe Director Thompson has been aware of the project and been involved in some conversations. I can't speak to the full level of detail. I don't know if she's here this evening or not, but.
Okay. And then a related question, would this track be something that the city could utilize for programming?
Absolutely. We're looking forward to having Fleetwood Jordan staff and programming using it after school and during the summer.
Okay.
And weekends.
Would that be in an anticipated forthcoming written agreement?
That would absolutely be part of our agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burns? Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll? Oh, Councilmember Kelly.
So I, with regard to the specificity that, you know, we're discussing, is there, I mean, you would still proceed. I mean, is there any reason, I mean, if we were to hold this to get, come back with more specificity with regard to city access and use and the fine details, I mean, that shouldn't hold this up, right? I mean, there's no reason.
It would impact the bidding process? Would it, it would impact the construction schedule and we're in a tight construction schedule?
You wouldn't proceed otherwise if the city didn't, if we didn't allocate this funding, it would be off the table?
That's my understanding, yes. That is my understanding, yes. I would like to say that there is extant circum- I would like to say that there is extant practices of both shared facility and campus planning across the schools in the district in the past and the concern that we would have limitations on public access to this space outside of school hours has not happened before, so, and I think that's the full intention, especially with the city funding for this project. It benefits the school and we look forward to that partnership, but we also want to make a point of noting that the campus of, the foster campus is a joint planning operation between Family Focus, Fleetwood Jordan staff and city staff and the district and the foster school, that the campus will be used and available to not only the, the schoolchildren and the children of the fifth ward, but the community of the fifth ward as intended.
Sure, yeah, I'm not right now disputing the, how we might use it, but I'm just questioning what would be the issue with holding this over until we get some of the fine details for the city residents so that they know what their money's gonna go for and what's, I mean, and you're saying that if the city didn't vote on this tonight, this plan wouldn't go forward.
Can I call Michael Perez from Cordean Clark because he is the design architect and part of the construction management team?
Good evening, everyone. Michael Perez with Cordean Clark, part of the design team, project manager for the foster school project. So the dilemma that we have is we are currently, as of today, out to bid with this underground storm detention system. There's a formal review process that's required with MWRD to make revisions. We've submitted plans without this addition of the track, but when including the track, we're going to need to modify the drainage and we need to include that in the numbers that are, we're seeking right now in the current bid. So today, what we're hoping to get clarity on is the design aspect of this is the important step forward, not necessarily approval of the project itself. If we're, if it's agreed that we can move forward with the design, we can start that process with MWRD, but that's currently our sticking point.
Okay, thank you. So in other words, like, there would be no track if, if we didn't, that's a portion of this plan that wouldn't exist if we didn't vote on that. That's not something you would include.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Harris followed by Burns.
Thank you, Chair. So I have a couple questions, concerns, issues. I don't like being rushed. I don't, I don't like that. I don't like somebody telling me we need to decide today something or just hit to my desk Thursday night. And I have residents calling and what is this, what is that, we're getting for you, which I have no problem with, but I don't like being rushed. I'll be clear about that. Don't rush me to make a good decision for 78,000 people. And I'm not saying you, I'm saying in general. I want to be clear that I heard councilmember Kelly said if there will be no track if the vote is no, is that correct? Or?
Yeah, I think that is the understanding. We're kind of, unfortunately with our bidding process, we're kind of at that point of time where a decision is needed.
Okay, so when, did anybody know this months ago?
No, this was a recent development.
By you all, by us, by?
It was a city initiative.
Okay. Okay. That's it for right now, but I have more.
Councilmember Burns.
Just want to make sure that, that when people hear that there's still information that, that we need, there's a very detailed budget in your packet. Use unrelated to the track that's, that still need to, to be figured out, but as Kirby said, if you just look at how the public is able to access existing District 65 land, there's, there's, as far as I understand, always an, an open policy, whether it's Haven, whether it's the track, I think at Lincoln, people are able to, the public is able to access these spaces without any issue and why that would change in the, in the, in with this particular school, you know, there's just, there's no precedent for it. In addition to that, this school is always, we've always talked about it being a neighborhood kind of community school and so the foundation of it is the idea that, that the, from the public's perspective, this is just public land and, and so it's always been discussed that, that all these spaces would be, there would, there would be a shared concept with all the spaces, so the public can flow between each one at the appropriate time. And just to give people some background, this process has always been on a really, you know, on an expedited timeline. When the district made the decision to go from K eight to K five, it, there was an opportunity presented for myself and others to think about how the school could serve our other priorities in the community. We've talked about it earlier this evening with the E Plan, 13 years life expectancy gap, another data point from the E Plan is one in three adults in the same census track reported no leisure time, physical activity and on and on. And so when that opportunity presented itself, I quickly jumped in to, to try to represent the ward's interest. As if you saw in the packet, this proposal aligns perfectly with, with things that we said we wanted to do in the 5/5/10 and it also aligns with E Plan goals, which are both highlighted in the memo. So while there is a deadline, we are following the, we are following the direction from things that were in the 5/5/10, we're following direction from what we learned in the E Plan and we think this is, we're confident this is a proposal that will serve the community's needs. That's all, Chair, thank you.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to pick up on the, the TIF conversation and ask Mrs. Zalmazak, I believe, to speak to the impact this expense will have on the TIF fund currently and then moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Clerk, members of the council. I'm Paul Zalmazak, I serve as Economic Development Manager. Councilmember Nusma, the, the, the funds would come from the 5/5/10, which is where the school's located. That amount of, I believe it was in the range of 200,000, I have that number in front of me. The way I've presented in the packet is we're, we're currently collecting funds as we do every fall, those funds will start flowing into the TIF. Mid-October, we should be kind of finished with the collection. We'll have funds for, this is a long-winded answer, but I want to make sure we're giving all the detail. We'll have funds for the, the track, we'll have funds for the, the revenue share that we have with District 65 and 202 for the TIF district that you all agreed upon a few years ago related to the Truly Building. And once those are paid out, we'll still have roughly $100,000 left. Now, just to be very clear, this, these funds probably don't flow until mid-2025 because, as I understand, because that's when the actual payment is needed. So we'll actually have more money in the TIF by the time it's, we're ready to pay.
Great, thank you. Then for councilmember Burns or, or Mrs. Zalmazak, yeah, there's a 5/5/10 committee, correct? Was this discussed at that committee and if so, what was the recommendation?
It was. Do you want to give the answer or I can reply?
Am I allowed, councilmember Sufferden?
Okay.
It's, it's, I had to do it, Mayor, but sorry. Yes, it was unanimously supported.
We had that meeting on Thursday, April 19th, we couldn't, I mean, we were able to get the information in the packet after it was published, but, okay, thank you. Yep, I'm done.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time. We go back to councilmember Sufferden with two and a half minutes left.
I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna echo what councilmember Harris said. I think being forced to make a decision tonight is unfortunate. I think everyone in the community knows this project's been plagued by unexpected deletions and now to have an unexpected addition thrown at a separate government and being told that it's a do it tonight thing just further exacerbates the problem of mistrust that's been plaguing this project all along. So I just want to make sure, I want to be very clear, you're saying if we do not vote to commit $300,000 tonight, there will be no track?
Can you come to the mic?
I'm not sure about the budget number you, you just said.
Whatever the number is, if we don't commit the funding tonight, you're saying this project, which has been in the works for how long?
I can't speak to that because I've just come on board eight months ago as project lead.
And in your eight months?
The K, the K five project was approved by our board in January 2024.
Okay, but, and in the eight months' time, when did the first time that a track at Foster School come to your attention?
Councilmember Burns brought that to our attention as a possible opportunity to explore in June.
Okay, and you're saying we have to vote on the funding tonight or else there'll be no track?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Okay, I appreciate it.
There's still nobody requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to councilmember Harris with four minutes left.
Thank you, this will be brief and I've already talked to councilmember Burns. We have a little bit of outstanding debt on our TIFs and I want to make sure and advocate there was a loan from the West TIF that, we know that that's still out there before we spend money, so I said it, we're clear.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and the funding is approved. The next item on the agenda is A 10. Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion?
I'd like to move item A 10, approval of change order number one to the agreement with Aubrey Construction Company for the Independence and Laramore Park renovations projects.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of change order one to the agreement just mentioned. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Laramore Park's in the fourth ward and we are looking forward to getting this project done. I have a question for staff, I guess that's probably Ms. Biggs about how can it possibly cost $94,000 to replace, I believe it's 12 pillars? Why not just tear this down and build a new one, which I would have to imagine would cost less? What, am I missing something here?
Members of the council, my name is Laura Biggs, I'm the city engineer. So it is just a very expensive project. The building has to continue to be supported while we are replacing the concrete pillars and then pouring a footing underneath, so it, it is just sort of the cost.
So you're not just replacing the wooden posts, but cutting out and the concrete underneath, repouring some concrete underneath?
Yes.
Not the, not the entire slab, just the?
No, but there has to be a footing for the wooden post to sit on. That footing is underground. Currently, it's exposed because we've removed the sidewalk that is around the building, so you can see it from the side, but yes, we will have to pour new footings, put in new posts.
Right, and so you couldn't see this until the sidewalk was removed?
No, as part of the preparation for the project, it, it's a structure that has a long history in Evanston, it's part of the Evanston Ridge Historic District and so we did have an architect inspect it. The community had indicated through the public engagement process that they would prefer to keep that shelter and update it versus having a new shelter in that location. So it was inspected, found to be adequate and what we could not see was the part that was underneath the concrete. So during construction, when they removed this surrounding sidewalk, then they exposed the deteriorated posts.
And this, and this is going to delay the completion of the project by a month or so?
Yes.
Is there any way we could do a partial opening of the park and just keep a construction fence around the pavilion?
That's not something we discussed, I can look into that.
Yeah, I'd appreciate if we could investigate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reed followed by Kelly.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I should have given a heads up on this. I'm just curious, because I've been getting questions about this recently, we're talking about park improvements here. Can you kind of just give some background on our backlog of park improvements? I think it's relevant to this moment and particularly I'm curious, oh yeah, we'll start there.
Certainly, so the city of Evanston has approximately 80 parks, some of which are just tiny little parks, pocket parks, ranging from parks the size of Lovelace Park or James Park, very large. Most of our parks are neighborhood parks though, and of those, there are approximately 11 parks that have had no real capital investment for 27, 28 years at least. So those parks, which we do refer to as legacy parks, have created a challenge where many times we can go into a park, if we have budgeted the money and we can just resurface a tennis court or change out an amenity and in that way keep the entire park going because different amenities have different lives. So you want to get everything right before it fails rather than waiting till the whole park is deteriorated. In some cases though, we did not do that and now we're facing a situation in which there are a lot of parks that need kind of a whole park refresh and renovation. Independence and Laramore Park, which are included in this contract, are two of those parks, so once those are done, then we'll move on to the next.
And what is, two final questions that can be wrapped up in one, which is, I know there's requests from the Parks and, the Parks Board, what are we spending on park maintenance annually roughly? I don't expect you to have the number, but roughly, what do we, what should we be spending if we wanted to ensure that all of our parks were, you know, certainly didn't have any legacy parks as, as described?
So I don't have the number of what we spend on maintenance activities and there really is a difference between the maintenance that are done by our Greenways Division and the Bureau of Public Services versus capital improvement. So at some point, no matter how much is invested in maintenance, capital improvement really is needed. They are somewhat limited in what they can do in terms of the really big investments. They, they often just don't have the right equipment even because most of their work is involved really dealing with the day-to-day keeping things running and in good condition. But I can certainly find out what we're spending on park maintenance each year, but things like resurfacing a tennis court involves equipment that we just don't have in our parks maintenance group.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So it looks like it's the columns, how many of these columns have rotted?
There are 10 and they've all deteriorated.
All 10 of them? Okay. And on that question, dovetailing councilmember Reed, I asked earlier, you know, now we're spending about $600,000 to renovate rehab Benton Park, but I noticed in the budget you have allocated 1.3 million for Benton Park, that's about a 550, 50 square foot structure. You know, it's, it, some of these numbers are really big, so yeah, we've got three, three estimates in the 20, three costs, expenses in the 24 budget for the Benton Park Fieldhouse, which I believe is about 550 square feet, one for about 700,000, another which I assume the 700 is embedded in it, 1.3 million for five years for that same little fieldhouse and then another expense allocation of 1 million for bathrooms in five different fieldhouses including Benton Park. So that pushes the, you know, the expense to renovating, rehabbing that little 550 square foot to about 1.5 million. I know right now we're, you know, we approved, I believe, a budget of 600, that's, again, that's two bathrooms and a space and residents were complaining very vocally about those little efficiency homes which have, you know, bedrooms and a kitchen and they're buying the land at 375 and those are 600 square foot. So I think, I, I definitely have some concerns about these high costs and I just hope we can start to rein in some of these costs. It's really unfortunate, I looked at a few of the other, Ackerman Park, that is deteriorating a lot and I, I fear that we're gonna be up again, you know, against another million dollar expenditure on the Ackerman Park Fieldhouse if that's not tended to. So I do have concerns about the maintenance and I hope we can do a better job of maintaining and upgrading these and not say it's been 27 years. and not say it's been 27 years. I mean, that shouldn't be happening, where we say it's been, you know, some it's been 27 years since we've done upgrades. So I do, I would like a breakdown of that Benton Park. I don't quite understand, you know, the 1.3 million, the million, and then the 700,000, and now the 600,000 for such a small space. I've asked for that, so if I could, I requested that breakdown. So if I could get that soon, that would be great, thank you.
So I don't believe we ever budgeted 1.3 million dollars for Benton Park, and I can look into it, but I think maybe what you're seeing is that we budgeted money in more than one year because of the delay in the project getting approved.
Yeah, no, I sent it to you, I sent you all the page numbers of the budget. It was in this year's 2024 budget, and I can pull it up if you'd like. But it is, the 1.3 million is from '24 to '29, so you're right, that's over five years. But then we budgeted 700,000 for this year, and then we budgeted another million dollars for bathrooms, which includes Benton Park in addition to the $700,000. So it's just, it's a lot of money for that little, for that small space.
So I think that prior to, I'll just say, that is not accurate. The number that we ultimately thought Benton Park would be is less than $700,000. The fact that it was wrapped into other fieldhouses prior to the fire that occurred, we thought it would be rehabbed with the other fieldhouses. The fire itself precipitated a situation. So there is no intention to spend more than what has already been allocated for Benton Park.
But it is in there, I mean, I can read to you verbatim the wording. It says on page, page 452, staff budgeted 700,000 to determine if the fieldhouse will be renovated or replaced and perform design work for select improvement. On page 460, this is all under no department. It's listed from '24 to '29, again, just for the Benton Park fieldhouse, 1.3 million, same exact language, to determine if the fieldhouse shall be renovated or replaced and perform design work. And then on page, and then under no department, again, there is $1 million allocated for bathrooms, which includes five, which includes multiple parks, including Benton Park. So including Ackerman, Baker, Benton, Lagoon, Leahy, and Lovelace. So I did ask for these, it would just be nice to see on what basis it is that, you know, these numbers are in there for that Benton Park fieldhouse.
Okay, so we definitely will clean that up for the 2025 budget, but it really is just the $700,000. And if we had not had the fire, we would not have been spending nearly as much funding on this one fieldhouse.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Sure. On this topic, but on another issue raised, you know, to your credit, Laura, you have been standing there saying that we need to invest in our parks the entire time I've been here. But, you know, when you mention Greenways, it kind of illustrates a problem, you know. And I'll use Cartwright Park as an example, and I'm just asking you to consider how we can improve this. You know, if I get an email tomorrow on September 24th saying that the conditions of the park are bad, the grass hasn't been mowed. The reality is that that is a function of a lack of investment in drainage, which means that they can't be mowed when it's wet. I mean, there's a lot of factors that play into it. How do we stop being? And again, this is a larger question for you to think about, for us all to think about when the budget comes. I mean, we're like the municipal equivalent of someone who goes to the emergency room as their primary care physician, because we don't catch things sooner. It's hard. I feel like you say it, it's not necessarily heard, when it's like, we need to make these investments now to avoid larger investments later, and we're seeing that manifest itself throughout the park system. How do we get to the point where, when you and your staff sound the alarm, it's heard by council? How do we do these types of repairs and investment earlier so that they don't become as extensive and as expensive when they need to be done? Not expecting an answer tonight, but that's, yeah. But that's something that we need to figure out, because we end up with these numbers that are huge, and the reality is, they could have been much smaller total numbers if we would have made smaller investments more systematically over time. And I just want you to give some consideration to how we can improve that, because, again, like, the daily conditions of a park are the responsibility of public works, but they're limited by what we've funded for the larger capital projects that are required. And we get to the point where, you know, for, just using tennis courts as an example, there's nothing Greenways can do about the condition of a lot of our tennis courts. How do we make sure that our maintenance and investment schedule anticipates problems rather than letting things deteriorate to the point where it's a much more expensive renovation? I just, I know that's something that you think about. I want to just, one, say thank you, because you have always been very forthright about the need to invest further, it hasn't necessarily been heard or acted on. But how do we, particularly in this next budget, make sure that we aren't setting up the people in these chairs five years from now to say, I wish that the people five years ago would have done this or that? And I also, you know, you mentioned the number of parks, there's a lot of parks to be dealt with, and a lot of facilities and structures in these parks. Like, one of the things we probably need to figure out is, what structures are we going to let go of? You know, those types of things. Obviously, switching over from wooden benches to more durable benches is like a small thing, and that has happened. Like, I really want to encourage you, because I think you do catch a lot of unfair criticism, because the numbers you have to say are huge. But I also believe that you are committed to saying intermediate lower numbers that we can work on. So I'd just really like to encourage you, I'd like us, when we have projects like this, to not, to set ourselves to not be surprised by the extent to which these things cost, but they're not your fault that they cost that much. It's a pattern of disinvestment that's happened over time, and how do we, like, turn the arrow the other way? That's not even a question, just a statement, and I see, can see the yellow reflecting in your laptop, so I'll stop talking.
Thank you.
It wasn't a question, but I think it's a good non-question for all of us to work on answering over time. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Wen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Rebel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hacariz?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
And Councilmember Burns is not in the room.
With eight in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the change order is approved. Now on item A-11, councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion?
I'd like to move item A-11, Approval of Change Order Number One for HDRA for the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Code, RFP number 2332.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves Approval of Change Order Number One, councilmember Reed, seconds. Councilmember Reed?
Thank you, well, I think it's appropriate to start off with two folks. We have our Chair of the Land Use Commission here, and I suppose you here on this issue. So first, if you just want to share the need here or the reason for the request?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, City Manager Stowe, and Clerk Mendoza. My name is Matt Rogers, I am the Chair of the Land Use Commission for the City of Evanston. As you all are aware, we are doing a comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance map amendment. Nobody mentions the map amendment, I'm just going to throw that out there. It's a very vital part, because that's how it affects each individual person's property. In looking at the timeline that we've been given to try to do our work diligently as well as then to turn it over to city council to do their work, we sat down and sort of looked at timing and how many meetings, how many hours we thought needed to be dedicated to different aspects of this plan. And we are starting early with discussions before anything is even presented to us. So this Wednesday, we'll start our first hearing, which will be on, it's a discussion on corridors, parking minimums, and zones. And so that will be a discussion. We're also having one a little bit later on green space and landscaping, and also one on R-1 through R-3. So we've committed as a commission to having about 10 meetings in the next two and a half months. We also do have two planned developments as part of that project as well. So in looking at what we were able to figure out, when we would actually see a document for us to respond to, because we can't begin our process until there's something in writing, we looked at how many meetings would we be able to fit in, in a reasonable amount of time, and provide the public time for input in the legislative process through the official hearing process. In doing so, we discovered that we would need about five meetings. It was made, we were made aware that the contract with HDR listed four meetings, which left us with one meeting kind of floating around out there. And to sort of break down what those meetings are, we're having one meeting on the comprehensive plan. We're having three meetings that will encompass the zoning ordinance as well as the map amendment. We have one meeting set aside for continuances, because we know there will be some, and then one meeting for our deliberation and any amendments that we want to make before sending this on to city council. So when I approached staff with that agenda, that schedule, we discovered that we needed to have extra meetings than what was originally outlined, going from the original four to a total of actually six meetings, but we're only talking about five here. Staff offered to step forward and do the presentation for us on the comprehensive general plan. There would be no need to have a consultant present at that meeting. That left us with five meetings where the consultant would be there, which would be our final deliberation, the continuance, and the three meetings in which we discuss the zoning ordinance and map amendment. It was all kind of done very quickly, because we were trying to get this to Land Use on Wednesday evening. Ms. Williams had a conversation with HDR, they presented their numbers to us. It was the request of staff at that time that we tried to involve the consultant in as many of these meetings as possible, since they're the ones who are kind of helping lead this process through. And so that's why Land Use Commission has made a request up to $60,000, because we were told the cost per meeting would be 28,000. We only are anticipating using one of those, but since it is over the amount that has to come to council for approval, rather than stopping the process and then trying to get back to council and get an approval for an additional meeting if something blows up on us, the idea was that we would ask for two with the intention of only ever using the one. And Ms. Williams can probably chime in here too, if you want.
No, that's helpful for my purposes here. I've heard from, not just from our public commenter earlier, but from folks about the cost of this. I think we even discussed the cost of this. And, you know, the cost that the consultant charges is the cost that the consultant charges. I think $60,000 is quite a bit, and also there is, you know, this council has made it clear for some time, although I think we should have kicked off this process quite a bit earlier in the term, but that we have a deadline for, or, I want to find a better word. We have a hard stop for when we want to see this come to council and to allow this body enough time to mull this over and pass this, many of these amendments. Do you still, do you think the timeline, that, I think the timeline is that November, December, Land Use Commission would look over all of this and send something to council by January? Is that the correct timeline?
So we have two timelines, kind of, that are existing out there. One is handing everything over to council literally right before Christmas. The second one would take us into January, but we would still be able to turn everything over to council by mid-January. But that gives us the time to have multiple hearings as opposed to one hearing only on the zoning ordinance, which would limit public testimony to about three hours on that entire document.
Thank you for that, and I do wonder if, you know, council can hold its own hearings to allow, we, you know, to allow public comment on this as well, if we can play a role there. I'm not comfortable moving forward with $60,000. I think that is, it's too much for this process. What I'm hearing you say is that certainly you need one meeting. And I would be, in fact, I plan on making an amendment to bring this down to $30,000, which should cover the one meeting minimum. Is there a reason that you think staff couldn't present the information?
That was not my request, that was a request from staff, and so I'm supporting staff in what they feel is the best way to present this to the Land Use Commission. So I don't know if Ms. Williams wants to speak for that.
Happy to, good evening, Liz Williams with the Community Development Department. So from staff's perspective, we're very flexible, and I think that we've been working so closely with the consultant team that we would feel comfortable facilitating the questions should the city council choose not to fund the consultant's participation. So, you know, we're here for your direction as to how you'd like to proceed in response to the Land Use Commission's request.
And so when you say that, you're saying even if the council said no money for the consultants, staff feels comfortable running the whole show?
We are comfortable keeping the consultant's role to the four meetings that is within the current scope and budget of the project.
Correct, yeah, okay. Okay, well then, I guess one last question for Mr. Rogers. Is there any reason that you believe staff couldn't handle that?
There's no reason we could, so the way that this came about was it was a very quick turnaround. And so when we initially got the numbers, we're trying to figure this out, we were having our meeting. We only meet every two weeks, so it was an opportunity for us to put this request in as we ironed out these issues. So it wasn't necessarily, we don't have confidence in staff, we feel the staff is very competent, and we have great confidence in the staff, all the commissioners do. This was if the staff wanted to have the consultants present at an additional meeting, we would make that request.
Thank you, thank you for that. So what I'm hearing from staff is staff feels that they can handle it, the committee chair at least, and I think on behalf of the committee.
I think I speak for the commission here.
Yeah, the commission seems to have faith in staff, so I'm going to vote no on this request and save the taxpayers $60,000. Thank you.
Acknowledging the possibility that that reasoning will be persuasive to everyone, and we can maybe short-circuit part of the conversation. There's a lot of people in line, councilmember Sufferton, followed by Rebel, followed by Kelly, followed by Harris.
Thank you, and Liz, I don't know if this is a question for you, and I don't know if it's fair to ask you, but it's not in the memo, how is it $28,000 a meeting? I mean, because I think Mr. Rogers' request is reasonable, and I think the thought that we don't want to spend $60,000 extra is also reasonable. So like, how's that happen?
Great question, I can't speak to the pricing of the consultants. We requested what the cost would be for facilitating two additional public hearings with the consultant team members that would need to be present for such a meeting, and that's the cost that they came back with. So I can't specifically speak to how they arrived at that other than we asked how much it would be to facilitate two additional conversations.
I mean, like, did they give us, like, an itemize, this person gets this much an hour, this?
They did give us a proposal of the staff that would be there and how much it would cost for those staff to be present, yes.
Because, I mean, it's entirely reasonable, and again, we're talking about a 20-year plan. Like, it seems to make sense to be, I mean, I understand there's a desire to get this done, but it's also to be as deliberative as possible in the context of the timeframe that we're doing, I guess. But I just don't get how it's $28,000 a meeting to have people who've been working on this come to two more meetings about it? Or that just, that blows my mind, and then it creates a false choice, where it's like, do we want to have the Land Use Commission take some time with this? Or do we want to save $60,000? And it has nothing to do with my confidence in staff's ability to do this. It's more like, how, just, where do they get the, like? It's more like, how, just, where do they get the like, whatever the correct term is for the audacity to say that it's $28,000 a meeting? And I, and that's not a fair question to ask you, because you didn't, but it just, I think it's in the city's best interest to have as much airing and discussion about this as possible, but it's also not in our interest to spend $60,000 for two meetings. And now we're in this situation where if you want to have more discussion with consultants present, it's 60 grand. And then I don't, I mean, you feel that staff is, I don't want to say capable or equipped, whatever the right word is, because I'm not questioning your, like, competence. It's more like, I mean, just how does, where do they get off saying that it's $28,000 a meeting? And especially when it's like, you know, what have we already paid them?
Great question, council member. And at the end of the day, I think you can have it both ways. You cannot spend $60,000, and you can facilitate the additional public hearings with staff support. Like I said, we remain flexible. We're here to support this process. We're here to do whatever it takes to move it forward. I can't speak to their pricing in jest. It'd be great to be a consultant if that's what you're making per meeting, but you know, that's, that's ultimately.
I mean, I just, I don't understand it, especially where it's like, hey, we're not tire-kicking here. We've already retained you to do this. But I'm not, I mean, whatever, the invisible hand does what it does, but like, the, the issue raised by Mr. Rogers, and I presume the entire Land Use Commission, is that they want to have time and space to really dig into this, and you believe that staff has the, can do that in an effective way.
Staff is ready and willing to support the Land Use Commission.
The product that we would get for free from you is not significantly worse than what we would get for paying $60,000 to these people to come for two meetings.
I think that's the decision for you all to make. As I said, staff is ready and willing to facilitate these discussions to support the Land Use Commission and their deliberations.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna just interject. Ms. Williams, if you could stay at the podium, I'm gonna interject here with a question that is maybe a reflection of my understanding of some circumstances that might kind of help. As I've had the opportunity to watch you and the team work on this, you've really, all the folks around you have leaned in, and I would say, just as some guy watching, it's seemed like you, you and the consultants have really become embedded, so that it's not the case that you're just waiting for them to, to sort of send you a piece of work product, but rather you're working closely in collaboration on that work product. And so I guess from, as someone who's seen that, what I'm sort of assuming has gone on here is that at some point you and the Chair of the Land Use Commission had a discussion where you were like, well, no, wait, we're envisioning a process where it's really going to be in the hands of the consultants for long periods of time, and therefore they ought to be the ones who are staffing these meetings. And now, as more time has evolved and the kind of workflows change a little bit, you're realizing, well, hold on, there's not really any value add in having the consultants rather than our own team, because our own team is there day in, day out, working with consultants on the details, and therefore are going to be equipped to speak to those details. Feel free to tell me that I'm full of it, or that I'm right, or anything else, because I, that, that's my sense of what's really going on here, and I might be clarifying to others if I'm right.
Absolutely. I think that you're absolutely correct. We definitely have been working very closely with the consultant team. You'll see that our staff is out facilitating engagement opportunities, just like they are, again, to expand our reach and ensure that we're providing ample opportunity for folks to share their voice throughout this process at every step of the way. So your depiction of our work together with a consultant is absolutely accurate.
Thanks. Sorry, back to our regularly scheduled batting order of council members, Revelle, Kelly, Harris, Nusma, Haddaqaris.
Well, first of all, I want to say, I think it's really, really important to have the, all the meetings that are listed in option two, so that we not only, so the Land Use Commission members have plenty of opportunity to talk about these issues, but that we have lots of opportunity for the public to share their thoughts with the, the commission. So, so absolutely, we want to have all those extra meetings. I already told Matt that I expected they were going to be bringing their sleeping bags, but, and then if, if the consultant's job at these extra meetings is merely facilitating the meeting, I have 100% confidence in Liz and her team. I mean, they did an amazing job, I thought, with our board meeting just last week, fielding, you know, questions from the, from the residents and, you know, really providing really, really strong, careful, inarticulate, wonderful answers that, so anyway, I'm, if you, if, because you, you would be at those meetings anyway, just, just not facilitating them. So I, I think it's, I'm, I'm prepared to let you, to take you up on your offer of an alternative to have you facilitate, facilitate those meetings.
Councilmember is Kelly, followed by Harris, Nusma, Haddaqaris.
So I disagree. I think that HDR, I think our staff does a great job, but we hired HDR, we hired professionals. This is the 20-year comprehensive plan. I think it's way too much money. I agree on that piece. Can't they attend virtually? I'm sure a good portion of the expenditure is, you know, lodging and flights and everything else. And I just think they need to be here. They're not just facilitating a meeting, they're here to defend their findings and, and, and basically their, you know, their report. And so, no, I think we absolutely, they should be at the table, and we should, as we should for this comprehensive plan, and then to have them not present with our Land Use Commission. So can we, can we discuss with them attending virtually and bring that price down? I just, I agree, the 60,000 is, and, and I would ask going forward, if, you know, due diligence, if we can ask people, please break that down, why does cost really get a breakdown in this cost, so when, when, when expenses come to us, we can get a better understanding to why they are what they are.
Sure. If that's the will of the council, to go back and request an alternative proposal, we'll take your direction on that. Again, I think staff is here to support and is flexible in how that support looks moving forward.
Thank you, yeah, because certainly they aren't here just to facilitate a meeting. So they're here for far more than that, and that's what we hired them for, to do the research, to do the vetting, to write reports, and they need to be here with our Land Use Commission. So I would like to recommend, I'd like to move that staff goes back and, and looks at alternative ways for them to engage with our Land Use Commission. I think we absolutely need more time on this, and it concerns me when I hear council members saying, we have a hard stop. City of a hard stop on a comprehensive plan, I have to say, feels a little reckless. This is a 20-year plan, and I've had former council members emailing me and texting concerned about the rapid pace that we're pushing this through. In fact, I even have a concern that we want to pass this right, you know, before elections. I mean, I think frankly, we should remove any political pressure or convulsion that could possibly occur by passing it right after even, or something like that. I'm, I am concerned about this idea of hard stop on a comprehensive plan, and we have to rush it. So I absolutely think HDR should be here, but the price is just exorbitant, and I think I would like to move that staff, seek a better, an, an alternative way of engaging so that we can reduce that cost and get the breakdown. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris, followed by Nusma, followed by Haddaqaris.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm gonna count, counter, contradict you, I'm sorry. I think our staff is capable of doing it. I think we're in, in a place where we need to be fiscally sound, and, but I'm also not in a place where I can tell somebody what their fee is, right? That's, and, and so you gracefully did that, thank you very much. That's what they said their fee is, that's what it is, we decide to pay or not. I think our staff is competent to do that. We are still working with our residents and people who know our residents. I'm always on the side of extra meetings, hearing one more time what is said. So my question to you, though, is what does that look like in capacity? I, I want to be thoughtful about that. What does that look like for capacity for your team, because that was not expected?
Yeah, I think some of the just things to consider in terms of capacity, we will have to review the comments that are provided and also track the commission's comments. Staff is typically at these meetings anyways, so it's not an additional capacity concern to have us doing that. I think the biggest challenge that I see is just the pipeline of potential applications that we have in the queue that do have associated regulatory timeframes by which they need to be processed. And so the longer that the Land Use Commission extends their conversations on the comprehensive plan, there is the potential of needing to add additional meetings just to do business as usual. And so that could present some challenges just because of the fact that we are extending the timeframe into January, where if those six meetings were all held within November and December, when we were anticipating them to occur originally, that is, that is solving for a potential backlog of cases that we do have in the pipeline. So just, again, putting all of the considerations on the table in terms of extending the timeframe out to January, that is one consideration.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Haddaqaris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm comfortable with staff, Evanston City staff staffing these meetings rather than the consultant. If we can perhaps save money by doing that on some other meetings, do we need the consultants for the other meetings, the four or five that we're already planning to avail ourselves of them for?
So is the question, could we juggle the four meetings that were allocated to the Land Use hearing differently, or maybe cut back on presentations?
I think it's clear, we're not going to approve the $60,000 for the, the consultants for two more meetings. Could we, in fact, save money by disinviting them from another meeting or two and turning that responsibility over to in-house staff?
I think that there is some important pieces that the consultant team does contribute. I don't want to just say that staff wants to handle this public hearing process all by themselves. They do bring a level of expert, expertise as this is going through the Land Use public hearing process. As Chair Rogers mentioned, there is the potential for continuance requests. At those continuous request meetings, there are opportunities for cross-examination, and that's something that I think staff would be very comfortable, or would feel more comfortable if we had consultant support on that meeting in particular. So again, I think there is a need for the consultant team to be available to support staff, so I wouldn't necessarily want to just give away the four meetings that we currently have in the scope.
You're comfortable if we get what we have paid for so far.
Yes, absolutely.
Great. Chair Rogers, you want to weigh in there?
I just want to jump in and kind of clarify that we're really talking about one meeting that we're asking staff to take the lead on here. And so, so.
One, maybe two, but one, got it.
But, but you've already agreed to do the comp plan, so that you, you've taken on the comp plan presentation already, so it would be one additional meeting beyond that. So we have the four meetings with them, we can strategically place those when, when staff feels we need the consultants, and then we can back away on that one extra meeting.
That makes sense. And I do want to say thank you, Chair Rogers, to you and all the members of the Land Use Commission, and to staff. You said 10 meetings over two months? Like, that's more than twice as often as this body meets, and that's an awful lot of time. So thank you all for putting in that time. Let's also point out that of those 10 meetings, if we follow option two, which is what I think we're all proposing, seven of those meetings will be on Envision Evanston. Each of those meetings includes three hours of public comment, so at least.
Most of those, most of those will.
Okay.
When we hit, when we hit our deliberation and continuances, those will not.
So, quick math, three times seven is 21 hours, a little bit less, but let's say 15, 16 hours of public comment total, even before it comes to council.
Correct.
So there's going to be adequate time to hear from members of the public. And let's keep in mind, like, the significance of what this committee is doing, you know, kind of, it definitely warrants taking a few more meetings to get it right. You mentioned the, the zoning map, which is, I would say, more significant than the board map, which took us 11 meetings to, to redraw that map with $0 for a consultant. I just want to throw that in. But the zoning map is, is so much more involved than, than the board map, that let's take our time, let's do it right. I would also like to talk about the engagement process that will happen after the Land Use Commission finishes their job, and what that process will look like when the, the recommendation of the Land Use Commission comes to council. So does that, do we schedule a, a special council meeting specifically to talk about Envision? That's something I would like to throw out there as a possibility.
If I could just interject, we, we had this conversation, and I think that once Land Use gets its final meeting set, then there's a conversation between me and the mayor and anyone else that he chooses to, to include in that with staff, to sort of outline the entire process from the very beginning to the very end, so people know exactly where they can have input, because we're conducting a number of meetings, but we also know it's going to be during the holidays, people will be busy, things will be happening, so people will be able to see the entire process from beginning to end, and not just our portion of it or your portion of it, but the entire thing.
Yeah, thank you. I, I do think that's important, that it is important that we, yeah, as early as possible, lay out what that procedure or what that process is going to look like, you know, penciling in some dates, understanding that things might shift around, but this is so significant that we want to be as transparent as possible. Thanks.
Councilmember Haddaqaris.
Yeah, I'll just want to second what a lot of my colleagues have said about having trust in staff. Sitting on the Housing and Community Development Committee, I'll, I'll give a plug if anyone has three hours, watch our last meeting, some real deep dive into our housing plan and inclusion of our housing ordinance, and I feel like we're in great hands. We really have a lot of expertise in our staff, and I'm sure they can handle facilitating one meeting and at a savings of 20,000, so.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back for a second crack to Councilmember Reed with two minutes and 10 seconds left.
I just want to double down on what Councilmember Nusma, I think, was getting at, which, well, I don't want to conflate the two, but one is certainly, I think this body is, is going to have a, a large role in ensuring that we're holding hearings and meetings that are focused specifically on the Envision Evanston plan and the zoning rewrite. And so I think it's critical for us to begin that work as soon as we can, because I don't think we need to, you know, ultimately, we're the decision-making body, and I think, I think this is a body that is well-oiled to receive feedback from our constituents, to make sure that we are dreaming of the Evanston that could be, and maybe, you know, just are, all of our phone numbers and email addresses are listed on the city's website, whereas I don't think that's the case for the Land Use Commission, and I'm sure they are quite appreciative of that being the fact. And so, you know, most of us hold monthly board meetings, and so I just think that we are really well poised to receive that feedback, and I think we need to begin our process sooner than later. And just to make clear that, you know, as far as the hard stop comment, that's not me saying that, that's this body saying that. I believe we voted on that when we approved our goals, so, and I believe even the council member who made that comment voted affirmatively for that as well. And so I, I, I do think that, you know, we set a goal, a, a hard stop for ourselves or a, a goal, and I think we need to meet that on behalf of our residents, because the issues that we're looking at here, as I think our mayor recently said, you know, they're not going to change Evanston overnight, but we need to begin that work as soon as possible to create more affordable housing, to create more development, to, to, to get to where we're going. And so I, I just think it's critical that we, you know, see the urgency of getting this work done, getting it done right, and making sure that we are, you know, truly taking in the feedback. the feedback of the community. But the proposals that are on the table already, you know, can have, can make a major difference in our community over the next few years, and we need to get that in place as soon as possible. So, thank you.
Still the case that no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with two minutes and 40 seconds left.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, this has nothing to do whatsoever about trust in our staff. I think we heard, you know, Ms. Williams say they would prefer the assistance of the firm that we hired. I mean, all cities hire consultants for their comprehensive plan. And again, we don't know what that cost is. And I believe there's a representative of HGR that lives locally, right, from Evanston, John Zabrook, or, I think, you know, that's here. So, I mean, I think we don't even know what that $60,000 represents, right? Don't they have a local representative?
John Brook does live, he is from HGR. He is no longer working on this project, though.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyway, so I do think that it's unfortunate that we're not even exploring the possibility of maybe this could be done in a way that's far less expensive, we just don't know. So, and I think the staff would appreciate having the support of HGR.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Saffron?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Hadda Kades?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
With zero voting in favor and nine voting against, the motion does not carry and the change order is not approved. But just to be very clear, as was discussed, the meetings proposed will go on according to the calendar laid out in the packet. I want to echo the thanks to Chair Rogers and the Land Use Commission for what is clearly going to be a tremendous amount of very important and meaningful work that we have no doubt you're going to not only do, which is already impressive, but do really, really well, which is a great gift to the community. Thank you.
Can I ask just a question on that?
Sure.
That's all right, thank you. Can we find out what that cost was? Can we get a breakdown as to what the $60,000 entailed? I mean, I think it would be really a shame if a virtual meeting...
So let me just speak to this. So I think Ms. Williams indicated that the specific individuals who are going to fly in and stay in hotels and stuff for that, those two meetings were enumerated in the proposal, with, I think, dollars per specific consultant. I'm sure that can be shared with us, so it asks staff to do that. But I also want to flag, your point is a great point that does not require any council action. There's, obviously, we have no doubt that if it were the case that we could arrange for some remote participation, it would come appropriately, nowhere close to $25,000, if a very, very, very modest adjustment of, you know, a few dollars to cover the hourly fee of just the period of time during which the consultants could join a meeting remotely where needed. That's something the city manager could do, just unilaterally. And so I think it's totally appropriate for the land use commission and the staff and consultant to discuss whether that could be done in a way that would make sense, but we don't need to involve ourselves in that from here forward. Is there, okay, sorry. So now we're at item A15. Councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion on item A15?
I'd like to move Resolution 54-R-24 authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for the purchase of real property located at 1833 Brown Avenue in an amount not to exceed $350,000.
Second. Councilmember Kelly moves approval of Resolution 54 dash R dash 24. Councilmember Reed, second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Councilmember Kelly.
So I love that, you know, we're looking at land trust property, but my, what else is, are there any other costs that we're foreseeing beyond, beyond this 350 in terms of construction? What's, what's the long-range plan on this in terms of cost for our taxpayers?
So I don't know if that's a question for community development staff or for economic development staff, or Luke, perhaps?
I think that's probably best, Director Flax is on vacation this week, so that's probably best question for Ms. Williams, if she's still here. I don't know if she's in the Old America Library.
Good evening. I'm going to ask you to repeat the question, I apologize.
Thank you. So I just, I had a question regarding, regarding the item A15 with the purchase of the property at 1833 Brown Avenue for SEPA to run a land trust, affordable housing, which is great, but I just wondered, is this the city's one-time final cost? Are we expected to, is there a possibility that we'll be investing also in building? And do we know?
I think at this time, those details have not been fleshed out. I know that when this funding request came before council for up to $400,000, as part of that funding allocation request, there was a proposal within that which did outline future city support as part of the future redevelopment of the site. But the particulars and the exact amount that that would be, would be determined once an actual proposal is developed.
Okay, so we would be investing more beyond this, then?
I recall the proposal did indicate that there would be an additional city contribution to any future project.
Can anybody speak in more detail to that? I just think, for full disclosure, for residents?
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly. I do think we'll, it would help to have Councilmember Burns input as well, because there were some deep details with, with the SEPA land trust. But I understand that funding for the purchase was from the first year contribution from Northwestern, from the city's Affordable Housing Fund. So I think, I think the plan is to limit it to that, but I think most of that is expected to come through SEPA. But I, this is not a program that I'm running, I facilitated the memo.
Thank you. Councilmember Burns, do you, do you know, I mean, if, just so we have an idea, are we going to be investing also in building and beyond this?
The proposal that we got last time from Rob included, says City of Evanston, IE Home, Housing Trust Funds, Good Neighbor Fund, et cetera, 1.6. You'll, you may recall, when I bring these type of proposals, my primary objective is to get site control. We can't, outside of our inclusionary housing ordinance, we cannot dictate how much affordable housing is on any particular site unless we own it, so that we can dictate how much affordable housing we feel is appropriate through a process. And so that's, that's what we're, we will be voting on today. However, when I bring these proposals, I also want council to have a sense of what the vision could be. But we're not voting on that proposal today, it was provided as an example of what we could do on the site. I think everybody up here is, wants to see, whatever we do, wants to make sure that it ends up in a land trust. Affordability in perpetuity, I think, is a goal of ours, or at least it should be. And, but, you know, we don't, we're not voting on a final, you know, proposal, and we're certainly not voting on the city to contribute any more than what's in your package today, which is 350.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffron?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Kades?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and Resolution 54 dash R dash 24 is passed. And finally, on item A16, Councilmember Nusma, do you want to make a motion relative to the rules?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules so we may consider ordinance 74 oh 24 for introduction and action this evening.
Councilmember Nusma moves suspension of the rules so that ordinance 74 dash O dash 24 may be introduced and acted upon in a single evening tonight. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Will the clerk please take the roll on the motion? Councilmember Reed?
Yes. I ask this question often when we do this, because I think it's appropriate. Why are we suspending the rules and why is it not going through the normal course of action?
Couple reasons. This one has been a long time coming, but the more pressing concern is that wheel taxes are due by the end of this month. And so in order to allow the residents of this block, one-stop shop, to get their wheel tax and their neighborhood permit, I'd like to get it done this week.
Thank you. Sorry. Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffron?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Kades?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the rules are suspended. Now, Councilmember Nusma, would you care to make a motion on the underlying ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A16, which is ordinance 74 oh 24, amending City Code Section 10 11 10, limited parking to extend the definition of Parking District D.
Councilmember Nusma moves final passage of ordinance 74 dash O dash 24. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffron?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Kades?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 74 dash O dash 24 is passed. This brings us now to call of the wards. Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. October office hours will be Saturday, the 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at Reprise Roasters on the newly reopened Main Street. October ward meeting is TBD. It had been penciled in for October 8th, that's not going to happen, I'll let everybody know.
Councilmember Burns?
No report.
Councilmember Saffron? Councilmember Revel?
No report.
Councilmember Reed?
I hate to break the chain, but eighth ward meeting that, this Thursday at 6:30 p.m. at the Robert Crown Center. We will have Darrell King from our water department, we will have some other great folks, it's all listed on the city's website and in the newsletter, so we're really excited about that meeting, and I invite eighth warders. And, oh, we'll have Ms. Williams, we'll have Liz to discuss comprehensive planning as well. And so another opportunity for feedback on that process. Maybe we'll have Mr. Rogers there. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Hadda Kades?
Next Monday, September 30th, at the South End Community Center, we'll be having a ninth ward meeting, and come meet our new deputy city managers, whole bunch of other things on the agenda. I'll be sending out a notice just to remind people soon. Thanks.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
I, too, will break the chain. Councilmember Reed? Just, tomorrow, we will have our second ward Mason Park third meeting, so that's 6:00 p.m. at ETHS. In the second ward, we will have the emergency preparedness that they talked about, that will be at Robert Crown from 9:00 to 4:00. And then 9:29 will be, which is Sunday, our West Village Jamboree from 1:00 to 4:00. Come, and, come join us for fun, food, and music at the Hartwood Parking Lot, which is a little east of Duster Dodge.
Thank you.
This concludes call of the wards. Councilmember Nusma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120 slash 2C, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding real estate. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120 slash 2C, 512, or possibly C6.
Councilmember Nusma moves that the city council convene into an executive session to discuss the items just enumerated. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffron?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Kades?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?